I'd like to bring the planning commission to order. All members are present, so we have established quorum. We have no cases on the agenda today, so we'll move along to communications. Right now on the agenda, we have wireless telecommunications ordinance. Are there any other communications here? Or is Mr. Valentour is present?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss the integrated services project across the street that they're going to be submitting here in the near future for Title 41. We'd like to just do an open communication on it today.
Okay. Well, Mr. Valentour, if you're ready, or since we have you in the audience who are, we could proceed if you'd like. Otherwise, we could...
Do you need to slam in, or no?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for reminding me. So I'm a little out of practice. I missed one, and I'm thrown for a loop. So if you will be speaking today, you do need to administer, or I do need to administer an oath. Do you swear and affirm to tell the truth to this commission?
I do.
Alright, thank you. You may be seated. So, Mr. Planner, would you like to present the topic, or are you not that familiar with it yet?
I'm not familiar with it at all at this point either.
Okay.
Can I sit here and do this, or do I have to get up?
You can either sit there, or you can come up to the podium. We just have to pick you up on a microphone.
There's a microphone right here.
Okay, thank you.
As of yet, you know, as I mentioned, we haven't sat down and talked over in terms of the preliminary meeting that we should be scheduling for Title 41 review with these people here. But I just thought, this is a project that you sort of caught a semi-glimpse of whenever we were in here not too long ago for the expansion that we were doing on the ISS building. And just as a preliminary, I thought I'd bring it in just to show you what's going on and what our plans are. Before we even come to Title 41, I believe, though, I do have to go before the zoning board of appeals. So that's going to have to happen before we go through this entire process. But whenever, a couple of things that are significant, I think, that this project was, when we went through it with the ISS Integrated Service addition, when we went through with it for certain aspects of the city reviews, including the tree commission, we actually looked at the entire property. So the plans that we have right now actually, hopefully, represent the decisions and the requirements that were going to be imposed or asked for whenever we finally brought this project in. I'm just going to, I'll bring you stuff.
Sure.
To look at it. Before, when I showed you, it was just a dotted end shell. Now, here's, there's just sort of a beginning of what this thing might look like.
Okay, so this is the integrated service building here. This is Graham. This is where you're going to put the new building.
This, what you approved last time was the parking lot here.
Right.
And additions with that there. And then this is what we're going to do. We want to look at it, say, previously. And what this is going to be is something that's a 4,000. It's going to be managed by no matter what.
So Graham requires probably first floor, first floor.
This is a B3 zone.
Okay.
And the two parking spots short, which is going to be a toughie. And still short, too.
Okay.
I know, but two of the units are handicapped accessible, so I have better room floor. Hopefully, they'll take into consideration their use for handicapped. These are family living units. I have to work out some plan for the zoning board, but that will be the biggest obstacle.
Now, this replaced a built-in house before that was actually had first floor, I think it was a ranch, wasn't it, or something like that?
Yes, it was a double-wide corridor unit, yes.
So that actually was not conforming in itself because it had residency on the first floor?
Right, yes. So it's not, we're not asking for something that wasn't there before.
Okay. No, I'm just trying to...
I'll run that. I'm trying to feed you lines here. I just remember what was before, that's all. I was asking, so what's occurring here?
What's the total occupancy?
There's 10 bedrooms. Four apartments. At one point, we were going to, until the addition was placed, the integrated service systems, I was going to build two buildings on the lot, two buildings. I would have to get state permits, that would be, but because of the constraints that were made due to the parking requirements for the addition across the street, now we're going for a single building with two stories and four apartments. And they're both, they're all townhouse design, so there's living rooms downstairs, bedrooms, but then on two units.
You can move it that way, so Harry can see it here. We can move over.
So you can see, this is a unit here and a unit here. And then if a unit enter here and a unit enter here. And then this, the living room, kitchen, bedroom, and then a set of steps going up. These two units in the backside are both going to be three-bedroom units, whereas the frontside, there are two. So no bedrooms on the first floor here. The second floor, we identify them in terms of, it's all of them are the same with two bedrooms each, four bedrooms total.
Okay, on the first, second floor, four bedrooms, two in the back?
Yeah.
First floor.
Four units. Each unit has a bathroom on the first floor. Two of them have bathrooms in approach room. There's toilets on the first floor.
Okay, okay. So the handicap aspect would be the back ones on that side?
The back units, which are all grade accessible.
Okay.
Portages. The thing that I've been directed to do by the owners of this building is try to make it fit into the neighborhood as much as possible and not create something that does not physically look like it should fit. So what we did here was, the second floor is actually mostly like dormers. It's not a full second floor.
Okay.
You can see the footprint of the first floor is much larger than the footprint of the second floor. So what I'm trying to do, and the bedrooms, the two, these two bedrooms will, and this one are actually, if you look at the elevations, they're more, like, this is a dormer.
Some of this building section, closed section, aren't they?
Yeah, right there. So we're not going to be able to use trosses on this building because of, we're trying to keep the profile as low as we can.
And you say because it's one big thing, you've tripped into the commercial building permit? What was it?
I have a four-unit building. It requires state approval.
State approval, that's what I'm asking.
Four more units. If I was doing duplexes, I do not have to go to state. So this will be a fully sprinkled building, and all state requirements will be required on this one. But I think this always looks a little funky, as you know. If you show it as dormers, it does not nearly look as bulky as...
So, let's see, south would be, if I was on East State Street, I'd be looking at this.
Yes.
If I was on Graham, I'd be looking at that. Okay, and these two would be from the backyard and the other side.
I'm sorry, is this Graham? Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to move it around, yeah.
This is the opposite side of the house. You know, the parking lot is, we're working with the next door neighbor in fencing and everything.
So this would be facing the parking lot right here.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's got two primary entrances. Two entrances, two portages for each one, step one, big entrance for everybody. See, one door is right here, and the other one's right there.
Okay.
Try to give each one its private identity. And the thing is, you know, and I think this is an issue that you all have been seeing, and everybody on New York Drive has to, is trying to preserve as much green space as you can on these properties. And, you know, I was trying to at least get some semblance of yards for these people to be able to use, each care, and not pave the whole thing.
Yeah. Aides, is there a reason you couldn't put the two spots here, like you have the two...
I could do that. I thought, get it away from the street better, put more green space at the street would be better.
No, it's still, I mean, it'd be the mere, yeah.
If I can see. But that's a suggestion I have no problem with. You know, my problem is, if I have to go before the zoning and lose, I might turn this whole backyard into a park.
When you brought the parking lot to us and related to the structure there, you did not need all these spaces. How many are assigned to...
I've got 12 spaces assigned to this unit over here. And we've got, I've got, we have to have a lot of that in the building, I guess, but I think it's de-restricted.
What do you say, 12 total for this one?
So you take those five plus seven of those?
They have already deeded eight of those across the street.
Six. I only need six of them. We've got it. We're doing a little definition, starting right now.
Five there.
Where's the other three? Where are the other three?
For what?
I see five over here.
Six on here.
Oh, right there. Okay, six over here, six over here needed.
I have eight here right now. I need 10. One through eight.
Okay.
I need 12. According to my calculations, I need 12 over here.
I had 13.
Okay.
But it does say usable square per floor area, so we, they've already deeded eight Innovative Services has to this building, because then they wouldn't put this one here. So, okay, now there's seven over here, or six over here, boy, seven or six needed to be over here, so they'll have to check.
I know, that's not recorded. We've already...
But they have done some stuff already, recording wise.
We can do that. This is a parking lot right here, as you know, so is that right there. And that's why, you know, I think we originally brought this in, we're trying to put parking, you know, space things out, so it's not a building parking lot.
And everything else on both sides of the street are single-family residences?
R2, actually.
Not R1. This is the designation line right here between the B3 and the R2.
That's the...
Goes like that. It's where it's like a transition use between, what do you want to say, the East State Street corridor and residential. And that's again, why we're trying to make this transition look better, at least with the scale of buildings we're doing there. So like I said, this is just an information meeting here today.
Yeah, of course.
We still have to go through the whole process, and it probably won't happen for a month or so, but...
Okay. Giving us a heads up and everything.
I appreciate your time, Mr. Valentour.
You want to keep this up?
It's up to you. Charlene could always keep a copy on file if you like, but if you feel like it's, you know, going to be constantly in flux, you don't need to.
It's like the state's saying.
That's right. Thank you.
Are you on the agenda for the BZI yet?
He just gave me this yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll...
Oh wait, he has to refuse it.
I'll refuse it, and then he'll go, he'll be on the January agenda for the BZI, for their variances for parking and first floor.
Okay.
First floor residential.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Moving along, unless there's any further questions for Mr. Valentour on the discussion? We have wireless telecommunications ordinance that was discussed at our last meeting again. If you want to fill me in on a little bit from the last meeting, I did watch our wondrous video. Thank you to our video staff.
Probably the best thing to do is a summary. Charlene did a really good job of the minutes from last week, or from two weeks ago to cover what I presented. I believe what I requested, or was that the planning commissioners review the model ordinance that I provided, and that we have a discussion about...
Did you get a copy of this?
I did.
The model, and if the planning commissioners thought there was things missing from it, or things that needed to be changed. Another discussion we had had was on if we're to draft an ordinance, would we be amending the zoning code, or would wireless communications be a separate ordinance? My recommendation was to have it as a separate ordinance from zoning with the, using special use permit process, where the planning commission would be the board that approves the special use permit. The reason being that if we have it as a part of our zoning code, then the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is entirely a citizen board, would be approving the special use permit. So if we separate it out, we can designate city council, the Board of Zoning Appeals, the planning commission, or an entirely new board to be the review board for these. So it seemed that the planning commission would be a better agency or commission to review these than the Board of Zoning Appeals, since we have elected administrative and citizens on it.
Good.
Oh, I have, I do have some questions, although I was looking at it. I was a little bit puzzled by the exclusion part, which is section...
Seven.
Seven, I believe, yeah. Basically, the CBD part of it, over here, reception devices, including reception antennas, I assume those are like satellite issues, right? Broadcast satellite?
Yeah.
It almost, okay, and so that, that I understand there, cableless television broadcast stations, other ones. Facilities exclusive for the private, that's ham radios, I assume. And facilities that have exclusive unlicensed spread spectrum technologies. I'm not sure what that is. It says Wi-Fi and Bluetooth. I imagine that you're talking about something that doesn't require an antenna.
Correct, right. Like Wi-Fi at a coffee shop, or at a restaurant.
Right, or if the city were to install something on the streetlights.
Right, we have their internal Wi-Fi system.
Okay, and I, I'd like to, the balloon test that was in there, let's see, I also wanted to look at section eight, let's see, section eight, 9A. Let me see what that looks like there. No, maybe not. Okay, oh yeah, it was section I-11, that's why, can't read my own writing. Talks about asthma side line height, location of proposed existing antenna. Is this normal that people put in it? It'd be page six, bottom of page six.
No, it's...
Is that normal that people would have to put in on a, an antenna license or something? I mean, how, you know, I guess I, it looks pretty technical to put something like that together.
I can tell you, we had rather detailed plans for the Roosevelt Tower.
Okay.
They did the spectral analysis and all that in advance.
And then there's section, let's see, there's something about 10 feet under. Oh, section 11, height of telecommunications tower, page 11. It talks about, basically, the idea is they have to, document a form of propagation study must include all backup data used before requested height, and a minimum of 10 feet lower height to allow verification of height need. So they're going to have to take two shots, high up and then low down?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The other one that came across also is section 9A. So I'm back on page 10, adjacent page there. Existing towers, this is our preference where we want the towers located. Existing towers and other structures on city-owned properties, including right-of-way. Technically, whenever we talk about use of right-of-way, it goes through council. So that would be the question. I mean, if somebody says, you know, preference one is that we bump it to council, if I read this correctly. And then if, like, council says yea or nay, then it goes to the second one.
Okay.
Does that make sense? I don't know. I mean, I just saw that that was a dividing line. I mean, we can recommend somebody using a right-of, city right-of-way, but it still always has to go down to council for signage, I believe, or things like that. So that's, I see, I see a little, you know, cross authority there, you know, which is something we want to look at if we take it out of zoning Title 23. Which I suspect we want to. The question is, do we delegate part of it to, and right-of-way, city right-of-way to...
Would it make more sense for the planning commission to be a review and recommendation body? And then city council ultimately accept the recommendation, or say thanks but no thanks to the planning commission?
That's a, that's an option, yeah.
Yeah, I like that aspect as well.
It's one, two, and three, if you look, city property, city right-of-way, any of it. I think it should probably come through here first.
Yeah.
And I guess, I just had a conversation with Don Florinori about intelligent communities and how to make broadband more accessible, or anything like that. And then reading of this, and I'm realizing that we're making it more difficult by this, you know, any legislation of this nature. And not that I'm far against it, but if I look at section 16, I was looking at a price for placement of tower, initial deposit $8,500. Is that, is that something we'd want to charge, or just, or that sounds high, I guess.
That would be an escrow account that would be deposited to, to cover the cost for an engineer's review of the documentation to confirm that what is proposed is needed, acceptable, safe. And that's a recommendation, not necessarily. Again, that's your...
Okay, and...
I believe, though, if we, if we look at the cost for Roosevelt Tower review, even as a base, I believe that was...
$5,000.
Yeah, but if I'm not mistaken, the actual charge would have been higher. Does that, does that sound correct to you?
No, what happened to...
It was appropriated $5,000, and so they charged us $5,000.
We had to limit the scope, yes.
Right, they limited the scope, and so they didn't do as much review, or they charged, they did additional review that normally they would charge or bill by the hour for that. They, because we only had $5,000 appropriated, that's all they could accept, or that's all they could bill us for.
And I believe this is only on new project, new towers, too, on 8,501, didn't we decide it was...
I had, I had down from the meeting with Fox Engineering, who is bringing us this as a model for the state of Ohio, $6,000 to $8,000 escrow funds for review and $1,500 for a co-location review.
So if it's an escrow fund, does it mean that our review only costs $4,000, or goes back, or does it go, does it go back to the next project or something?
No, it'd be refunded back to the developer.
Okay.
We should probably check with the auditor and get her take on establishing an escrow account like that.
And then, let's see, a couple other pieces in here. Let's see if I can find it real quick. I wrote some of it on a piece of paper, then off. Okay, page nine, this would be section, I guess it's, I lost track, eight, P, page nine, number P, letter P, sorry, not number P. Applications should demonstrate and provide in writing a drawing of how effectively the screen from the view of the base and related equipment. And I wrote a question there, is that something the tree commission had been involved in, or just the planning commission, or reviewed by the tree commission? I know with the monopole, the flag that's out on East State Street, there was some discussion of the trees around the base of it being a certain quality and quantity. So I just bring that up as a talking point, as something to think about. Let's see, what were the other ones? The setbacks, which were section 15, page 12. Essentially, if I read this correctly, Roosevelt Tower could not be built. Is that what I'm seeing?
Other than the fact that we're exempt.
Yes, we're exempt. But as guidelines, I see it's fairly restrictive, because we're talking about anything as this, the false area has to be 10% greater than the height of the tower. And I have no problem with that, just be aware that that is a pretty stringent limitation. I mean, at that point, we can put the chicken coop underneath the towers.
Well, how big are wireless towers in comparison to, isn't Roosevelt a radio tower?
I'm not sure.
I always think a radio tower is being much taller than wireless towers, but I don't, I don't really know off the top of my head.
Well, that's, that's running a van. We tried to ask Ron Forrest in there, but that's basically running our telephone system, which is wireless. And it's making use of the height, line of sight issues. And again, I think that discussion somewhere in here was that it doesn't necessarily have to be line of sight for some systems to work.
Okay.
You know, if you look at our, right now, we have two Horizon, Verizon on our parking garage, and they're not that tall, but we're using the height of the parking garage to help it along there. And I just look at that, and I was looking at the 100, you know, if we're talking about 100-foot tower and 10% greater, the setback's got to be about 110 feet or least, or something on each area.
Alright. There's our chickens again.
Okay. And the application system, section 18, it looks like we'd give a permit, but most of our building permits have a timeline on it, a date line, and I, in other words, if the permit's not utilized in two years, I think your building permit...
Year, start, and two years, complete.
Okay, so we might want to put something like that in there, a sunset clause or something like that, so if you don't build it in two years, you don't, it doesn't stay open forever.
What section was that in?
Section 18, page 13.
Yeah, deer either.
It's just an idea. I don't know if it's viable enough, but the idea's not open-ended.
We have some other models we could provide to planning commission members, like in the city of Brea. They actually put a height in there, meaning no greater than 140 feet. And I think there's one from the APA Hall. I don't know how much you want to read, but it's kind of, you can see what's existing and...
And again, I'm not expressing opinion one way, I just looked and said, these are the questions I had, or points of interest I saw as something that we want to look at, and what the implications are. That's all.
Right.
Do we currently have height restrictions on amateur radio towers or antenna?
We don't have any restrictions on towers today. And this, I believe, specifically sets out that ham radios, amateur radios would be excluded from this. I don't know of too many within the, within the city, maybe, I only know of one person I can think of offhand that I know is a amateur radio operation, but those towers are usually...
Not that tall.
Yeah, they're similar to the old wing antennas everybody had on their televisions, on their rooftops for TVs back in, before we all went to cable.
Yeah, I only know of one private tower that's fairly high up, and it's actually in bad shape, so it's going to come down sooner or later.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would be interested in looking at a couple other, I mean, particularly in the state of Ohio, that's already, you know, maybe been challenged, if a challenge has taken place, or has been on the books long enough that if a challenge would have risen, would have already taken place.
We've been told that this model has been tried and true, tested in court. I don't know about the, you know, Brea and the other ones.
Yeah, well, I mean, I guess it goes back to, you know, where how many properties could actually, you know, take an antenna of 100 feet? You know, I mean, if you're going the 10%, you have the 110 feet, if it's in the center of the property.
That is something we would have to look at.
Right.
We can't create a regulation that's on the books, but it legitimately excludes anybody from actually building a tower. We can't, we can't ordinance them out, regulate them out of existence, so, yeah, the distance requirement would be...
I think that's the key one. I mean, like, when this was first brought up, I mean, my biggest concern was, you know, sure, we could find some spots where it could go, but it could just be useless, and really no, you know, point in the city going through all this effort to helping a cell tower just support, you know, maybe not even the city, but elsewhere, so...
I think that was a part of the discussion in the minutes, that it would be exclusive for our city.
Right.
And I noticed in, on the minutes, page two there talks about existing towers are misconceptions, existing towers are grandfathered. So if we put, to put this in, in place, does that mean everybody would have to come back and retrofit their towers, or...
No, I think it means that anybody modifies them, then would have to show proper paperwork and evidence that the tower will work.
So they wouldn't be saying, oh, it's less than 50% modification, we don't have to go to you. Okay.
I think that, that might be a strategy to, if you have a community where there is a proliferation of towers already, try to eliminate some of that proliferation and get co-location going. But we don't really have a proliferation issue at this point either, so...
On page six, let's see, section I, number two, where it mentions that the documentation that demonstrates and proves that the need for the wireless facility to provide service primarily and essentially within the city. I know we've talked about within the city, but would we also include three-mile radius for projecting this around here?
Not as it relates to, the three miles is only in relation to the subdivision of land, and so for not subdividing land, we, the city has no authority over. That's from a, the FCC requires that somebody who, that, a city can ask that you need to verify that the tower you want to build is primarily for the city that you want to build in. You can't say, well, I want to put it, I want to put it within the city of Athens, but the benefit goes to the plains and not to the city. So if your benefit, or if you want to put something in the plains, it should be in the plains. If you want to do it in Nelsonville, the benefit should go within those city limits. It can, the benefit can extend beyond those limits, but your target has to be within the limits that you want to build in.
Okay. Useful to know.
Yeah.
So an annexation, once something was annexed, then it would fall within the purview of within the city?
Yeah.
But if somebody had already done something someplace else, that gets grandfathered in?
I would think so. Until it needs modified, yeah.
Are you suggesting that you would like to see it extended to three miles for that? I mean, the same reason that we looked at some...
That could be...
Just in terms of the philosoph, you know, the whole philosophy behind the sublet, Just in terms of the philosoph, you know, the whole philosophy behind the sublet, for the subdivision, that, you know, if you're thinking in terms of the future, just that immediate perimeter around the city, I don't know if that's something that you want to think about.
If we're annexing in, that would, that would be part of the annexation process anyway. City council would, and the planning commission would review, what are we annexing in and what, is there a risk? Is there a benefit? Is there a, you know, is it actually a liability to have that piece of land now become part of the city?
And they would, I mean, the review would also look at non-compliant uses to city code that we'd be annexing, I would assume.
And I suppose that could be a condition of an annexation, is that the property owner or the tower owner provide documentation that that tower is safe and sound and et cetera? I don't know.
In terms of infrastructure, one of the reasons why the three miles for the subdivision is because to repair infrastructure after the fact, like roads and plumbing and water and sewers, much more expensive than a tower installation, I suspect. I mean, in theory, it, and again, they may be servicing the city and maybe someplace outside the city. If it's outside the city and they're servicing part of the outside, we add an annex in, it's going to be part of the city service as well. And we really don't look at that most of the time in terms of annexation, I don't think. You know, it's usually water, fire, sewer, and, you know, and police, you know. I don't think we guarantee cell phone connectivity or anything like that.
Someday.
I hope not. But you're right, you know, it's something to think about, what happens in the future on that. So I guess I'd, I'd be interested in seeing some of the other templates out there, just as examples. You said Berea, was it, Ohio?
You should have that. I distributed several to you.
I probably have an eye for it.
First time, but we can, if you want additional copies, we can create them again.
I'll, I'll track it down by folders.
Give us a chance.
You kill a tree yet?
Exactly. Well, then I put forward a motion that we table discussion on wireless communications. Again, we can keep that as a hot topic to our next meeting, so...
Continue with, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any further discussion on communications? Okay, if there is not, we move along to reports from the city planner. John, or Paul, do you have anything?
Yeah, I've got a couple of bullet points I'll go through. I've been involved with a committee that's been formed around the concept of zero waste. It was a group that's through our Rural Action Nonprofit Agency in the county and the Voinovich School, as well as the School of Business. It's just a running, a standing committee that's looking at ways we can take things out of the waste stream and put it into the reusable stream, so cutting down on the amount that's going into the landfill and creating more recyclables, but then finding a local use for recyclables, so we're not actually exporting potential profit-making from recyclables to other communities, trying to see how we can generate revenue streams, create businesses out of our waste streams. So it's a relatively interesting project. We've had a few meetings on it, and we expect to have some sort of a report, a 10-year plan on zero waste sometime next year, working with graduate students from the Voinovich School and graduate students from the Business School, so.
Can I add to that for a second? Tonight is going to be a meeting of the Athens Hocking Waste District Policy Board, which is looking at the five-year plan. The draft plan has actually been put out, I received it Monday. It has to be submitted to EPA the 12th of December, so it's a very short time limit, and it'll go back and forth and be implemented to 2012. So there's a recycling waste reduction plan that the Hocking and Athens County have to put together that will take us five years in. And if you're just talking about 10-year project for zero waste, that means probably the next round, and I just mentioned this as a timetable, what's going on, we're going to have a plan in place for the next five years easily. And hopefully the zero waste group comes up and matches, gets in synchronization with it eventually. I like the concept, but, you know, it's a ways away.
Yeah, it's an ambitious concept, ambitious project. Additionally, we've been toiling away on that sidewalk inventory. We're getting real close, expect to have the second round of data put into our GIS system by Friday. Then we just have a few small sections of the city that we need to complete, and Andy Stone and I have a target to get that done next week, so that we would have a citywide sidewalk inventory by the end of next week, weather permitting, that we can get outside. And then in 2011, we'll be working on putting together a proposal or a plan on how to get bad sidewalks repaired, how to get, get everything back up and have a better sidewalk system throughout the city. The solar project out of the community center is up and running. It's generating electricity for the community center, so if you haven't seen it, feel free to check it out. It's a pretty neat project. There will be some information coming out on that, yes.
Does the link going to be on our city website to look at the energy?
Yeah, I apologize. I said about two weeks ago I put that up there. You can go to a website and physically and look and see actually how much electricity or energy it's generating on a 15-minute intervals. You'd be surprised to, even on a day like today, yesterday when it was raining, it was still generating energy, so. So, pretty high-tech. And two weeks ago, on Friday the 19th, I took and passed the exam for the American Institute of Certified Planners. So in about six weeks, I should be notified, thank you, that I will be officially a certified planner, which was a requirement of my, my job as well, so. Have not received the official certificate yet, but the exam said I passed when I hit complete, so.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, that's all I've got.
John, can you tap that?
Yeah, but I don't want to. We had our second roundtable meeting last night on the rental signs. You have the minutes in front of you. I'd like that you just look them over and really not go into discussion all the lot, but just kind of read it. And we're hoping to have a third one before the holidays and see if we can't get everything resolved or at least proposed. Let's put it that way, I guess, so. That's, that's it.
Okay.
Paul, are you going to do a Court Street Shuffle?
I haven't done one of those. Coming up on probably 18 years. I don't think my body could handle that.
Archie's ready to go.
15 years. Are you buying Archie?
I am not buying.
If somebody wants to buy, I'll consider it.
Maybe go to two bars. Make it official. All right, if there's no further questions for our planner and director of development, we'll move along to Citizens to Speak, which I think we're all present, the citizens that are here. Announcements and other business, our next meeting is scheduled for December the 15th at the same time at noon in the same meeting hall. Any other announcements? Okay, disposition of last meeting's minutes.
I looked at them, I moved that we accept minutes.
All seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, is there any further discussion for today's meeting? I move with you, and thank you.